Everyone, okay.
Okay.
I'm going to call to order the Monday, November 25th, 2024 Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting to order, and our first item is to go into closed meeting, and we're going to have a motion that states, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following, Section 2.2-3711, number five, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, and that would be project number 2024-006. Do I have such a motion?
De moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Spoon.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Sfritjakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Thank you.
It took me about two minutes to park, walk in, drop my ballot in the box inside the door, and return to my vehicle. Requesting and returning an absentee ballot is absolutely free, free not only to the voter, but also requires no bus or taxi to return. The prospective voter need not be concerned with travel time or expense.
Closed meeting, could I have a motion to come out, closed meeting please? In a second.
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone? Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and we're gonna have a motion for certification that we'll read. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed are considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Kit, Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, thank you. And now we're to the part of our meeting where we have our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance led by our county administrator, Ms. Hill.
Please rise as you're able for a moment of silence, and then join me as I lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And now we're at our public address section, and we do have one citizen that has signed up, and I will go over the guidelines, and if anyone else wants to speak after that one citizen, they may come on up. So what we're going to do is, you're gonna come up, you're gonna state your name and where you reside in the county, address remarks to the chair and the board, and you'll have four minutes to speak. At three minutes, the yellow light on the box on the podium will go off, and at four minutes, the red light will come on, and that means your four minutes is up. You may leave any written statements and/or information for the board with the board clerk, and we welcome our first citizen up that has signed in, and that is Wayman Pack. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, Board. My name is Wayman Pack, and I live on Piney Woods Road in Reiner. As it gets closer to the holidays and people begin to submit their wish lists for the upcoming budget, I wanted to speak to you before next year's budget process begins concerning the additional satellite voting location that was approved this year for the Blacksburg area. There have been additional discussions about adding more satellite voting locations in the Reiner and Shawsville areas. Let me be as clear and succinct as possible, there are absolutely no fiscally sound reasons to ever spend the money of the good citizens of this county on projects such as these. As I have spoken on this before, let me reiterate some of my prior talking points, as well as submit more information. Early voting in Virginia began on September 20th of this year. My wife and I received our absentee ballots via the mail on September 21st. I doubt that anyone in the county would be inconvenienced by waiting one day past the earliest possible voting date to receive a free ballot in the mail. If a person does not trust the mail to return their ballot, they can drop their completed ballot off at the registrar's office, or have a trusted friend or relative do it for them. This is what I do on one of my trips to Christiansburg. It took me about two minutes to park, walk in, drop my ballot in the box inside the door, and return to my vehicle. Requesting and returning an absentee ballot is absolutely free, free not only to the voter, but also requires no bus or taxi to return. The prospective voter need not be concerned with travel time or expense. As I stated previously, there is absolutely no cost involved to request, mark, and return an absentee ballot. How in good conscience can this Board justify spending tens or hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on additional satellite voting locations when the state of Virginia has made a provision for anyone who desires to vote absentee to do so without any restrictions? Section 242-700, the Virginia Code states in whole, "Any registered voter may vote by absentee ballot in accordance with provisions of this chapter in any election in which he is qualified to vote." Section 242-703.1 of the Virginia Code titled Permanent Absentee Voter List states, "Any registered voter shall be eligible to file a special application to receive an absentee ballot for all elections in which he is eligible to vote." In accordance with procedures established by the State Board, the general registrar shall retain the application, enroll the applicant on a permanent absentee voter list, and process the applicant's request for an absentee ballot for each succeeding election. What if the person is awaiting trial? State Code has this covered as well. Section 242-701 of Virginia Code titled Persons Entitled to Vote by Absentee Ballot, Persons Confined to Waiting Trial or for Conviction of a Misdemeanor. Any registered voter who is confined while awaiting trial or for having been convicted of a misdemeanor may vote by absentee ballot. It amazed me to hear Supervisor comment on how many people said that they stopped by the vote at the Blacksburg Satellite Polling Location to vote early while on their way to the Virginia Tech game, and no one commented on the irony of the fact that these same people evidently think that voting is important enough to do unless they were already on their way to a football game. Thirty polling places were already set in the county before the Blacksburg Satellite Location was approved against the decision of the Montgomery County Board of Electors. Please stop this madness before it goes any further. If this Board has additional discretionary funds to spend, use them for free lunches for all Montgomery County school students, as Supervisor King has suggested. That is an expenditure that benefits our county and our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address the Board? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close our public address. And are there any addendums, Ms. Hill?
No, there are not.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move into our work session, and we have two items, the renewal of tax exemption for the Islamic Center of Blacksburg, and then Montgomery County Sheriff jail staffing needs. Do I have a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, at this time I'll look to Ms. Hill for some information on our first item.
Thank you. I will provide some information, and then I believe the applicant is here. If you have any questions for them, and if you have any questions for staff, we'll try to answer those as well. As you know, the Islamic Center of Blacksburg is a religious organization within the county, and they have, they own a .795 acre undeveloped parcel at 113 South Park Drive in Blacksburg. This property was granted tax-exempt status in 2021 for the year beginning in 2022. It's a three-year process, so it's time to renew that, and they have filed a request for that. A site development plan was submitted to the town of Blacksburg, and I let you know yesterday that it was an approvable plan, but it had not moved forward because some bonds needed to be filed with the town, and that is, it's my understanding that that occurred today. So the town will likely be ready to move forward with that, I would expect next week, since this is a short week with the holiday. As of Friday, however, and I believe today as well, because the site plan hasn't been approved yet, building construction permits have not been submitted, nor have they been reviewed or approved. The fiscal impact to the county based on the current assessment of this lot would be about $3,896 a year at the current real estate tax rate, and so the alternatives for the Board to consider are granting a tax exemption for the property, which would be for a three-year period, or denying the exemption request, and then the Islamic Center of Blacksburg could reapply for tax exemption in the upcoming year. So in 2025, if the request was denied, they could reapply for calendar year 2026.
Okay. All right, do we have questions or comments from Board members? I'll look down here first and start with Supervisor Bone.
So there's no option to partially, it's either all or nothing, and then they have to wait a year?
That.
And is this something that other religious organizations do regularly?
Request the exemption?
Yeah.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's a religious organization like a church, or you know, same with the applicant, if they have a property that has a worship building on there, like a church or a worship center, once they have that, then they're gonna be exempt under the, under the Constitution, so they wouldn't have to come to the Board. The reason they have to come to the Board is they don't, they're, they're, they don't qualify for classification because they haven't built anything, they haven't built a worship place yet. I think it's their intent to build one, but not until it's built and used as a, for their worship will it, will it be exempt without the Board designating it as exempt. They are, they are eligible for designation, but not classification.
There are other religious organizations that have taken years to get to building, and have asked for this exemption ahead of, or is this really unusual?
I'm not aware of any. I think we have one other property that's currently exempt, that's a vacant lot, that maybe was, do you remember when that was declared?
I think it has one, one year left.
One year left.
I think it's one year.
Okay. Anyone else down here?
So we're over the three-year mark, I apologize. So we're over the three-year mark, right? So this is three years from the original exemption?
That's, that's right.
It expires December 30th, right, three years.
Okay. And the plans from, I'm trying to get this down, so the plans were just submitted, and the bonds approved?
The bond was, was submitted today. The original application was made in October, I believe, of 20, or approved in October of 2021, and the site plans were provided to the town fairly recently. I don't know exactly the date of that, and then today the bonds were posted.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, and Supervisor King?
Is the funding lined up for this building?
I don't know the answer to that. We could ask the applicant.
Do you want to have him come forward and answer? And the question was, is the funding, has the fund even raised for the building?
Yeah, we're in the progress for raising funds. We already raised funds to pay the bonds, which was $62,000. And then we took, oh, we spoke with a contractor, which is here today, Mr. Richard Brooks, to give us an estimate, and we have already like raised $50,000 to start off the project, site preparation, everything, and then waiting for the estimates is, is, is very important for the next step in terms of fundraising. And the good thing is that once we have the plan, the town gives us five years to finish the project. So in terms of for this to be feasible, we, we raised the fund for the bonds, and then we raised the fund as well for the first phase, which is $50,000, and then once we start the first phase, we will resume the funding, because we have been not doing lots of things because the, the site plans took a little bit too much time to be finished. So we are just waiting for the contractor to start working on the building to raise money for the next phase. So we moved very positively in terms of fundraising for the bonds and for the first phase of the building. Now we just, once we start the first phase, we will continue raising fund for the remaining of the project. So I think we are moving forward with this.
Does that answer your question, or do you want to know what's covered in Phase One, or?
Yeah, when do you propose you're gonna start the bill, actual building?
Well, we, Mr. Richard is here, so he is willing to provide more details, is the contractor that we spoke with. So within a few weeks, we should be able to start, because we're just waiting for the final approval from the town. So they have already, they finished, they didn't have any more comments on the drawings, so they are done with this, so that we're able to pay the bonds today. And then I think once we get the final approval, which hopefully will be next week based on the email that they sent, we should be able to go ahead and schedule for the pre-construction meeting and get the land disturbance permit for that. Based on my speaking, my talking with Mr. Matthew Semper today from the town, he didn't, he didn't see anything that will stop us from, from having this permit issued, because everything on paper is, is approved.
So in Phase One, is that actually the building, or is that just grading?
This will be land preparation, as well as some grading as well. So I think this will cost like, yeah, nearly $20,000 to $30,000. And then the next phase, Mr. Brooks is still working on the details on how much will be the second phase. But we are, we are working on this, and if you have any specific questions regarding the construction timeframe, he can answer those questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Demott?
I have two questions. So if this is not approved tonight, they could reapply for January of 2026?
That's correct, as long as they apply by July 1st of 2025.
Have you, have you signed a contract with the builder?
With the builder?
Mm-hmm.
No, not yet. With the contractor, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, not, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor Gravsky?
My question was gonna be about fundraising, because you had mentioned in your presentation back in August that you were putting together plans for fundraising, but it looked, we talked about that, so that was my only question this evening.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but this is something that we've discussed before. You know, we have to look at what the intent is for us granting exemptions, and I believe that what our purpose was, was to give a break to organizations that support our citizens. This particular organization does that, but they have no building. And I believe last time I spoke about this, I said that this is a mistake. If we were to grant exemptions on vacant lots, we will get a tremendous amount of applicants. Why wouldn't they? I mean, it doesn't, who wouldn't want a break? This organization has benefited from it for three years, but this is now our time to correct this. I think I actually brought up the scenario of, we could be granting this to an organization, and then they never build anything, and that has happened. The only other applicant that has applied and we granted the exemption has decided not to build. So this is something we need to correct, and if this can be put into the information or the application process, it needs to be done, that, that states there has to be a building or a facility there that will conduct the business that they're looking for the exemption for. So I am definitely against it, not because of the organization, they've done everything they can, and it appears that when your building is finished, you won't even have to come to us. You will be, you will be exempt. So it just, it seems to me this is our opportunity to correct it. The other exemption, I believe, is gonna run for another year. We'd have to look at that, but they're not planning on doing anything with it, because they apparently couldn't find the money to build. So I, I think this is our time to make things right.
Can I just make a small comment?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think the only reason for applying for the tax exemption, because the land is there. If there's a building, then there won't be a land that requires tax paying. So the thing is that we only apply for this exemption because the land is there with the intention, and also with the planning to build the building there, and we have already started, we took like very strong steps since 2018. And actually, the only, and the main reason is that the plans were paused a few times before is because the COVID hit at that point, and you can see from the history with the town, we have already did everything, I mean, previous, of course, executive board, because I am a new president for this organization since just last year. So they have done everything that they can to move forward with this, and they signed a contract actually with a contractor, but after the COVID hit, they didn't know what to do, like many other small businesses and other people, they didn't know, and without even the government funding for these small businesses, they would have been shut down. For us, we do not have any resources even to pay for the taxes during that time. So, and of course, we are not eligible like small businesses to apply for the, for, for any kind of loan from the government, so only rely on the cash that we get from donations. So, and we have already invested like tens of thousands of dollars with Hughes Associates and Forsyth, this are the, the architect offices to do this, these drawings for us. So I don't think that we are doing this for nothing, because this tax, this, this donation's money, we are, we are, we have like an obligation in front of our community to move ahead and build this building, because these donations, we have already spent lots of money in terms of drawings and everything. So we cannot just back up at any, at any point. And I think we have like a good faith that we are moving forward, we are doing everything we can to have this building done, and we will be, we will have this building done. We just wanted to kind of avoid like the $6,000 that we'll pay like every year, because this was before we got the previous exemption, we have been paying $6,000 a year to the county and to the town. And then the first time, this land has been purchased since 2010, and our organization have been, has been paying taxes to the town and to the county. And only when the people were sure that, hey, we will move ahead, and then we'll hire a company to do the drawings, which was in 2019 and 2018, 2019, then they thought about, hey, you are moving forward, let's apply for the exemption. They did not apply for this, although the land has been there for, for many years already. But once the, the plans became kind of feasible, then we applied for the tax exemption, because this will help us in terms of fundraising and avoid extra costs that we will really need to finish this building in the future.
Okay.
I hope that will be.
Are there any, Supervisor Bone?
I actually just want to make a comment. I have some friends who attended services at your organization quite regularly over the years, and I was invited to attend some, some meal gathering several years ago, and I couldn't speak highly enough about the organization, and certainly it makes a lot of sense what you've said about COVID. That has, that's complicated a lot of organizations' lives. I would highly encourage the Board to support one more round for this organization. You know, I think it's a very worthy organization. I think that they've tried very hard to stay on track. They've been derailed, but it's in short order. So I would hope that the Board could support it.
Okay, and Supervisor Kits?
I want to make this plain and clear. From everything I've heard, you have an amazing organization, but I'm looking at this for the first time, not three years ago. I'm looking at it now, and I think the plans are more aspirational than they are possible at this point. I have a problem with three years, and understand, COVID and everything else, but I have a problem when nothing's been done to the ground or anything else, because that's what the exemption was given, and it was given with a known three-year limit on it. So I have a problem with, with, it's good to have a plan, it's better to have some execution and have a, a timeline to be able to get stuff accomplished, to be able to put the building on there. And I think there's been enough time that it's nothing towards the organization itself, just because of the development on the land. I want to make that clear, that it has nothing to do with the actual organization portion, just the development of the land. And I, I have a problem with that, just because it's been three years, even though I understand the problems with it. But if we continue to do that on an aspirational scale, that could create issues. It really hasn't. hasn't, but it, it's one of those possibilities, so just saying. The timeline of just getting the bond approved, right before we come into this, it's just, it's too many coincidences, so.
Okay, anything else here? All right, let me look over here, all right Supervisor Graski?
Does the exemption have to be another three years? Could we? It's, it's a three-year, okay.
Okay, anything else?
I'll just make a note, it's important, probably, uh, the bond was paid today, not approved today, so it was paid in August, we knew that it needed to be paid, and that was the next step.
Okay.
Actually, we had to wait until the, the sites, or the site plan is completely approved, because there were like still a few comments, this is why we had to wait before we can pay the bonds, this is why.
In August, we were told that that was what was, the town was waiting on, that there were no comments, no more concerns, and that the bond was, needed to be paid, that's what
Yeah.
was said in August, and then it was paid today.
Yeah, this is, there was just one more uh, piece of uh, in the process to be done, which is having the uh, the plans finalized by the town, and they worked out some details with the, with the architect office, and then they send, they had to send it to the landowner, which is Nate, I think in, in Chicago, which is, you can see in the resolution that, that Nate, which is the owner, we are not the owner of the land, we are just using the land. So then it was the owner, so they had to send it to the owner, because the covenants has to be signed between the town and the owner of the land. So this also took some of the process, and they finally were able to sign it in this, in October 25th. Uh, so I think I attached it, uh, Mr. Ahmed Alhassan, which is our treasurer, he sent these documents by email to uh, I'm not sure to whom exactly, in the county.
Those are attached.
I think Miss uh, Mrs. Sweeney, oh, was Sweeney?
Yes, and those are attached.
Yeah, he, he sent, yeah, and this was done in October 25th, and then once, once the, the town reviewed everything, they told us, they gave us a green light, they, hey, you can go ahead and pay the bonds, this is the, the last piece of requirement, this is why we just submitted that. So we're just, we're waiting to, for the landowner to uh, to sign these documents, because before that, we couldn't do anything, and this, again, this was in, just this October 25th.
It just seems to me that this is a, a, an unusual circumstance, and there are extra steps that he's highlighting, that giving another um, another exemption is, is something that we can do for the goodness of our community.
Okay, anything else down here? Okay, over here, all right. I guess, I guess we're finished, thank you for, for coming and sharing.
Thank you very much.
And then uh, we'll move on to our next topic, which is the Montgomery County Sheriff, um, jail staffing needs.
This, the um, previous item is on the agenda for action later in the meeting.
Right, mm-hmm, under new business.
Yes. A few uh, weeks or maybe a couple months ago, time flies, Sheriff Parton came and spoke with me about some staffing needs in the jail, and we talked about timing and those kinds of things, and we've moved forward since then, and uh, he has a request that is before you, we distributed to you a few minutes ago, a memo that was uh, submitted by Lieutenant Stoll, that has some staffing information on it, and I think that Sheriff Parton might have some additional information for us as well.
Just a few remarks, members of the board, Madam Chair, thanks for giving us some time this evening, I have Lieutenant Stoll with me, uh, he is our jail expert, so any questions that I might not have the answer to, we can beat him out of him. So I'm, I'm gonna try to um, avoid one question right off the bat, that one of, two of you might have when I'm done, is why now? Why are you seeing us now? Why do we need people now? What's the hurry? What's the urgency? The answer to that is, we are constantly evaluating our mission to make sure we are keeping our inmates and staff and public safe. Recently, and recently is the last couple years to me, uh, we have noticed a concern, concerning trend, uh, that's caused us some, some pretty major concern. So a, a little bit of background, we have four deputies assigned to four shifts that work twelve hours each, so two daylight, two midnight. If you look at the numbers in the jail, I'll, I'll just hit another question ahead of time, we have twenty-nine people assigned to the jail. Sixteen are on those shifts. The other positions are mandated by the state and federal government and DOC to perform duties that have to be performed for us to stay open. Uh, and we can get into those if you'd like to hear them, they're kinda boring to you, but we certainly can. But those positions are full-time positions that work eight to four every day, out the door, except when we need to hold them over, which we're doing on a constant basis now. They don't work weekends, they don't work holidays, and they don't work after four o'clock. So let's concentrate on the four PM hour, from there until the eight o'clock hour the next morning. So at six PM, four deputies will come in to relieve the four who have been on the floor during the day. One of those deputies is immediately not used on the floor, because they are locked in the control room and cannot leave, that shift is down to three people. One of those deputies is sick, they're off, family death, FMLA, whatever, they're not there. Ten o'clock at night, we have a medical emergency. Sheriff's Office policy, we don't travel with one deputy, always two deputies. If there's only two people left in the jail, and we have a medical emergency that the rescue squad can't take, because they're an inmate, we have to take them. You can see where I'm going with this, we, we have some major issues. Hardly ever is there a time when all three of the remaining deputies is working, because we're working so much, they have so much comp time built up, we have to let them off for the comp time. And then there's training, and everything else that, that deputies are all for, that anyone's all for. Long story short, we have for years been doing what many, many other agencies have been doing, is working far too short, far too hard, for too many hours, with not enough people trying to cover more work. And I guess in the corporate world, that might not be as serious, but in our world, it's real serious, because if we don't have enough people, then we're talking about safety, and we're talking about safety for everybody, not just those in the jail. The um, sheet that I, I scanned and Supervisor Demots passed on to you all, I think shows very well how far behind the times we are. And the first county we looked at is Paige County. You can see the, the ADP, if you don't know what that is, because that's not a familiar term for a lot of people, that's average daily population. That doesn't mean that's what we hold every day, we might have ninety in the jail, this is the average for two months that Lieutenant Stoll pulled. But you can see in Paige County, they have five more than our average daily population, and they have double the positions on the floor that we have. If you look one down, Roanoke County, look at that, ten more average daily population, they have more than double what we have on the floor. They have enough to cover their safety issues and their workload issues. And to be honest with you, I'll finish with this, we're asking for, for four, in reality, we need eight, I'm not here for eight. But uh, I, I hope to be next budget season. Tonight, we're asking for four new positions, and um, we're hoping this is the easy part, because finding those four, who knows? Thank you.
All right, let's see if there are any questions, um, I'll start over here at this time, Supervisor Graski, any questions or comments? Okay Supervisor Demots?
Thank you for your time today, Sheriff Parton, um, and thank you for um, sending this my way, so I could share it with everybody, I do appreciate it. As we discussed, I know that you're coming to us with a need, and that need is often very closely tied to safety. And I, we didn't talk about uh, comp time and stuff like that while we were on the phone, and that um, to me even makes your argument stronger. So thank you for bringing this to us, thank you for providing this information, appreciate hearing from both of you.
Well, thank you.
All right, let's go down to this end, Supervisor King?
I don't have no questions.
Okay.
But is there a, I notice this is not on the agenda for tonight.
Right.
Can we add it?
You may add it, and we have um, cost for four positions, we have cost for six positions, which could include one per shift plus two additional for the night shifts, I believe, or we also have what the cost will be for eight, which Sheriff Parton mentioned, he will be likely asking for in the budget process.
So you ask them for four tonight?
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we put that on the agenda for tonight? I mean, if the rest of the board's okay with it?
Yes, we could um.
When you, we come out of work session, you can make a motion to add it under new business.
We have funding that's unallocated in the current year budget, six, you wanna know how much six cost? Okay, we have funding that's unallocated in the current year budget, that is recurring funding, that we could just transfer the dollars from that, that's what the resolution would be. For four new positions, this includes some one-time cost of um, their uniforms and equipment, but the total cost for, for the current year will be three hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred dollars, that's if we funded for the entire year, so it would be slightly less than that, I'll calculate the, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per year, yes, yes.
I think, does that, but that includes one-time cost, too.
It does include one-time cost, so I can come up with the correct number for you in a moment, for four.
Or.
For six, it's five hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
And you said you can come back with the, with the one-time cost would drop, so the average yearly would, because it's gonna drop down.
And they are not asking for the entire year.
Yeah.
Right, yes. Right.
Okay, and Supervisor Boon?
How much, do we have enough unallocated funds, recurring funds, to cover eight positions?
We do.
Yeah, okay. Um, I do, I, I don't have any questions, I do wanna compliment the sheriff and everybody who does work at the jail, um, I would say at least four, maybe six years ago, I, I was able to take a tour of the jail, and I was very impressed, you know, I, I never enjoy going to a prison or a jail, but it's a rewarding experience just the same, and um, it's uh, it's something to be proud of, I don't, I don't know how to describe it, because it's sad and this, in the same, but it's a necessary thing, and you do a great job, and all your people do a great job, and um, I, I thank you for, for your service in that part of your department, thank you.
Okay Supervisor Kits?
So me and the sheriff had a long talk, I had to sit down with him, and coming from a family that has the side of law enforcement, safety cannot be underestimated for the inmates and for the sheriff and his deputies, so he knows how much I support them and what I'm gonna make sure that they're taken care of, and they have the tools they need to have to be successful. So as we go forward, I just wanna make sure that's clear, because I appreciate what you're doing, not everybody can do it, not everybody wants to do it, and I am thankful that you are the person that's up there doing it, so I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
Yeah, I don't have a question, just a comment, um, we all know uh, the, the struggles that we have just providing for our, our paid fire and EMS. It's, it's the same thing with the sheriff's office, um, there, they are jobs that absolutely have to be filled, and um, you have to deal with the reality of people taking time off, people even quitting and going to another job, all those same issues, and you gotta cover the, the very important things, and keeping prisoners off the streets is a very important thing, so um, I'm with the majority here, supporting this.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll just say that um, when I talked to Sheriff Parton, of course, I, I told him I supported it, public safety is one of the main, main things that we're responsible for, not just for our citizens, but for our, our people that work at the jail and for the inmates, and so if this is a need and you feel it's important, actually, I don't see anyone not supporting this, because you're not gonna come here and ask for this unless you need it. And so I appreciate you getting the information together, and then, so I think the discussion will uh, probably be if we add this, as I think Supervisor King wants to add it, as a new business item, would be the amount, how many?
I have the amounts now.
Yeah, okay, you wanna?
Yes, for the current year, I would assume that you would hire them for half the year, because you're probably not gonna hire anyone that would get paid before January, is that fair to say?
I doubt we would have anyone, especially with the holidays coming up, I, I doubt we could get anyone in that fast.
Uh, so the cost for four deputies, including the one-time equipment, for six months would be a hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars, six deputies would be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and eight would be three hundred forty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hill.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else that you all would like to say? Everybody okay? All right.
I do have one quick announcement.
Okay.
Just uh, something for the future, uh, Chief Brewster, Chief Ramsey, and myself are instituting an EMT program for deputies and the police officers. Right now, we have um, sixteen deputies and ten officers from the Blacksburg PD and Christiansburg PD. We also have a state-certified EMT instructor who's starting the course in May, it will run through August, and those deputies and officers will come out, EMT certified, and can perform those duties on the scene while they're waiting for rescue to arrive. We are currently securing the funding, just for future reference.
Thank you, that's.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being creative about that, too, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
If we do move it to be able to vote, um, do we have to say the number right now or later? I would recommend eight, so that we don't have to go through this process again.
Okay, anything else? All right, motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, is there a motion to be made to, to do anything after the work session? I'll look to Supervisor King.
I'd like to make a motion to add the sheriff's request, eight.
Second.
Under new business?
New business.
Any discussion? Okay, would you like to vote on that first?
Yeah.
Since you have it out there, okay?
We need to do consent first.
Oh yeah, we do, all right, let's just put it out there then, under new.
And that will be a transfer from special contingencies to the sheriff's.
Alrighty, all right, so let's um, so let's go to consent.
Excuse me, Ms. Biggs, we need to vote.
We have to vote to add it to the agenda.
You gotta vote.
So moved.
You gotta vote to add it.
Oh, vote to add it. Oh, vote to add it, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes to add to the agenda.
Okay, sorry. All right, let's go to the consent.
Make a motion to accept items of consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and that'll take us to new business and we have the original five items and then we have the addition of the sheriff's request. So we'll start with item A, which is the ordinance for the Islamic Center of Blacksburg.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second for voting.
Okay, discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve, okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Demotsz?
No.
Mr. Grafsky?
No.
Mr. Kitsch?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
No.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
No, but I would encourage them to come back.
I have one aye, six noes, and this is to deny the request.
Okay. All right, next we have our first proclamation and this is for Dr. Pat Huber, who is the president of New River Community College that will be retiring at the end of the year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second, any discussion? Okay, I'll just say that she's been a wonderful president, so wish her well. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, our next item is a proclamation for Martha Ann Stallings and she is the person that pulled everything together
from Montgomery County for the race for ace and we want to recognize her work. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and our third proclamation is for Tina King, executive director for the Agency on Aging, for her retirement.
And she's been wonderful in this job and we wish her well. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Awesome.
Any discussion? I think y'all agree she's been great. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. And our next proclamation is for shop small business. It's a week now. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and our next motion concerns the sheriff's department. I'm going to go to Mr. King. Would you like to make such a motion?
Motion.
Okay, and that's for eight, correct?
Eight.
Second.
And there's a second, any further discussion? All right, roll call, please. Ms. Boon?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demotsz?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay.
Good luck getting your eight. Hope that happens fast, okay? And next, that got us through our business and we're ready for reports and so I'll go to the county attorney.
Uh, no report tonight, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, county administrator.
Marty wishes everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And so do I. I do have a few things to go over with you this evening, some updates, and then there's one topic that I will discuss at the end that we might need some input from the board on. Several of us attended the Exenissues Chamber meeting last, well, that was on November the fourteenth. And our legislators were there, Senator Hackworth, Suterline and Delegate Obenschen were there and they provided information that was similar that, to the information we had received at VACO, but that was very useful. Delegate Ballard wasn't able to attend because he was fulfilling some of his reserve duties at that time, but he had representation as well. And then the next day, Chair Biggs and I attended the Recovery Court graduation, which is the, was formerly known as Drug Court. They had four graduates at that function and it's, it's just a really impactful time to go see the graduates and they, they work really hard to go through the program. It, it's a great program, very beneficial. Some of our opioid debatement funding goes to help, has gone to expand that program. I'm not sure, but you may have noticed as you came in the door this evening by the employee entrance, we have a new bench there that Volunteer Montgomery donated in honor of the first responders for all of our career and volunteer first responders for law enforcement, fire, rescue. The bench is made from recycled soft plastic, so that was a, a nice event that they had last Monday. I attended a Partnership for Progress meeting with the town managers and Kevin Byrd and I represent Emily Gibson from Virginia Tech. I know that some of you have had Partnership for Progress meetings recently as well. There's going to be a survey coming forward in the near future and I don't know, the, some of the board members might want to talk about their roles in that partnership as we move forward, but it is making progress in helping Virginia Tech and the community work together and figure out what some issues are that need to be addressed and how to deal with those opportunities. We had a really great Montgomery Matters turnout last week. It was a community engagement workshop and Chris and I attended that. I wanted to let you guys know that every staff member of the planning and GIS department came, every one of them, and stayed the whole evening. They volunteered to come and be it that, we did pay them, of course, if they're eligible for pay for that. But they were happy to be there and support their team. They're really doing an awesome job. And we had a great turnout from the community, which is what we want, so as that progress, as that process moves forward, I think we have more opportunities for engagement, but it's going very well. Some of you might have seen some media attention that we received that was very positive also. The Reiner Park is moving along. As of our last update that was official at the end of October, it's still on track to be completed by the end of January. We have a progress meeting on December, I'm not the one who ever said December. Okay, well, it will, it will definitely be completed by December of 2025. But it'll be completed way before that. We're going to have a meeting, there will be a progress meeting on December the fifth where we'll get an update and we'll let you know as soon as we find out an update on what the progress is. I know they're still working on the road around the entrance to the park. And our interim tourism director, Chris Lawrence, is going to provide an update to the board at our next meeting, which will be December sixteenth. That's not the regular week of the month that we meet, but as you know, we only have one meeting in December. The tourism group has been working to establish a new agreement, a new cooperative agreement. And Chris has drafted that, Marty's helped him, and so we're going to bring that forward and give you an update about what that looks like so that hopefully you will approve that in January. Chris will also be presenting that information to the, to both towns the same week. So he's going to present to us on the sixteenth, Blacksburg on the seventeenth and Christiansburg on the eighteenth of December. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. Chris is really doing a great job in helping us get through this time without a permanent director and I think we're going in a good direction there. We had two passenger rail events. The first was hosted by the Passenger Rail Committee that Ann Castle is responsible for. That was held at the Montgomery Museum and it was an update, it wasn't new information to some of us, but to some folks that attended that event. It did include some new information. And then we had a New River Valley Passenger Rail Station Authority meeting last week that I attended with Chair Biggs and Vice Chair Fidzikowski. And we might need some input on an item that we're discussing there. If you guys have anything to add as I go along, just chime in. The site for the Passenger Rail Station is now Cambria, in the Cambria area, as I think you know. And the Virginia Public Rail Authority is going to be responsible for building the platform there and also get the parking lot taken care of initially. They are planning to have a groundbreaking for the platform in March of this year, so we'll give you more information as we get that. The Passenger Rail Station Authority is responsible for the station itself and there's a built, there are two buildings on the property. One was built in the eighteen hundreds and one was built in nineteen oh six. The one that is not as close to the, to Depot Street where it crosses over the railroad tracks is the one that will be used for the station. It, it's the, referred to as the nineteen oh six building and so renovations will be needed for that. We do have grant funds available, the, a local match will be required and there's a participation agreement that will be a separate agreement for this station. We have the authority agreement and it talks about how each member of the authority can vote and has an equal vote. For this specific project, a plan was established quite a few years ago about how the funding would work for this station and a participation agreement is being drafted. The percentages of funding that will go toward this station are weighted by locality based on several facts, factors, the proximity of the station to the locality, the population, the projected ridership. So the partners in this that will fund the majority of this station are Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Christiansburg and Virginia Tech. If at some point another station was, in the New River Valley was to be developed in Radford or Pulaski or wherever that might occur, then a different participation agreement will be drafted and different funding formula will be established. So it's important that we get this right when we get the system established for the performance or the participation agreement. There, because there are so many jurisdictions involved, Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Giles County, Radford, Radford University, Virginia Tech, Blacksburg, the town and county of Pulaski, I'm not sure if I said both of those, are all involved. So some of the entities have small participation percentages, whereas the remainder of us have a large percentage. So we're talking about the best way to establish the voting for that one project because the entities that have the most cost will need to have a, there's a thought that the entities that have the most cost need to have a stronger weighted vote on that one particular project. So we're developing a system to determine how to do the weighted voting and we wanted to get feedback on that. My county brain immediately just said, okay, well, Montgomery County has X percent, which is about nineteen percent, I think. So we would get nineteen percent, one vote would count as nineteen percent of the total. That isn't a, that's not a traditional model. It's a little bit more tech, math-intensive than we typically have in situations like that, so.
But all the, but everybody has two members representing.
Right.
Jurisdiction.
Right.
So that would have to change a little bit.
Right. So another, because we could, conceivably, the two members could vote differently, differently from the same jurisdiction. That probably wouldn't go so well, but it, there's a potential for that, I suppose. So another thought was to look at how many votes different jurisdictions would have. So maybe, and I've not done the math on this, but maybe Montgomery County would have, each of us who are on that authority would have two votes. So we just wanted to, I'll let Stephen Mary chime in if they have anything to add, but we wanted to get some feedback from the board as we move forward with that agreement and see if you have any other ideas or preferences.
Yeah, my suggestion was, because I've seen it on other authorities, because we have a higher participation, that we could just add additional voting members. So instead of Montgomery have, Montgomery County having two, just like Narrows has two, maybe we could have three or possibly four members that would vote. That was just something I threw out there and several people objected to that because they felt like the, the larger jurisdictions would basically take control of the, the, the authority. And I, I don't, I don't think it would work that way because we're all working towards the same common goal, so.
But it's only about this one project. It's not about the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, okay.
There was some confusion about that in the beginning of the discussion as well. It's, it's not for the entire authority, just this project.
So as a project would come forward?
Right.
Yeah, that would be how it would. And the main reason to get it out to you all, everything has sort of moved really fast after the decision was made to put it in Cambria, it, you know, put us up, you know, ahead, like hopefully twenty twenty-six. And so when we've been going to these meetings, like all of a sudden we're, you know, things are moving. And so the idea was to come back and let you guys know that this was being discussed and looked at. And then I guess Steve and I were probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, looking at Angie with her math and Angie's also the vice chair of that authority. And so we were sort of looking at her like for the math part of it to see what we could do, but just so you have it on your radar.
And I think one of the reasons that it made sense to me that we would just have a spreadsheet and plug people's votes in and then wait them is because the county, the four largest entities in this particular project are covering seventy-eight point seven-five percent of the cost. And then we have Giles County, for example, is covering one point nine percent. So it would be hard, I think, to make that be completely equitable, but if the group felt like it was okay to have, to not make it be exactly equitable, it might still work with having additional votes.
Yeah, can you give us the math, but also like not have us figure this out, hold up anything, like?
We don't need for you to say.
One way or another.
We definitely want this, but if you have ideas or you felt very strongly or you said everybody can still have an equal vote even though we're funding more, those types of issues I think are what we need at this point. Do you two agree?
Yeah. Okay, and I guess the other thing you might want to plug in there is they're looking to maybe have a groundbreaking in the middle of March.
For the platform, right?
Yeah, so keep that.
They're doing the A and E design for the building renovations right now, so there's not a cost associated with that at this point, not a cost estimate.
Yeah, and you know Norfolk Southern is giving up these buildings, well, actually, I, I think Virginia bought them, but they're building another facility down there because they still need to use that, that yard as a service area. So if, if you ever drive by there, you'll see they're, they're putting up another building. As you're looking at it, it's on the far right-hand side, so.
They are making progress.
Yeah, they've already.
They're moving quickly.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Oh, okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, all right. So now we'll go to board member reports. Supervisor Demotsz, do you have a report tonight?
I do not.
Okay, except happy Thanksgiving. Okay, and Supervisor Grafsky?
Uh, just a quick little update. On the seventeenth, I visited Price Park and got a guided tour and history lesson with their acting park manager. I had never been out there before and it's, it's actually a really, you know, beautiful space and there's a lot of cool history out there. And anyhow, had a, had a really good. And, uh, anyhow, had a, had a really good time out there and they're working on, trying to secure some funding to shore up ownership of all the land and things like that, but, uh, really beautiful. Would highly recommend it. A little chilly now, a little wet, but, um, it's a, it's a beautiful park.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Bone?
Happy Thanksgiving, safe travels.
Okay, and Supervisor Kits?
So before I get told again, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone? So I don't get astized for not saying it. Um, but I want to remind everybody that Speed Zone cameras are active at the schools. Um, for those of you that want to fly through in the county, uh, there's a big sign that says, "This zone enforced by camera", so if you get a ticket in the mail, maybe you should slow down. So just be safe, guys. We got kids, we got break coming up and with all the holidays and everything. Just wish everybody to be safe, so thank you.
That's good. All right, Supervisor King?
No report, but happy Thanksgiving and just a reminder, please check your flues and your smoke detectors.
Okay, that's good. All right, and Supervisor, uh, Supervisor, Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Yeah, you cut me down. Yeah, I appreciate Supervisor Kits bringing up the, uh, speed cameras. Um, as many of you know, my wife drives a school bus and she said the, uh, the last time there was a accident on the interstate and of course, all traffic gets detoured down, down Route 11, 460, right through the school zone. She says people were flying, they were running 65, 55 in a, uh, 25 zone. So, uh, I, I think there was probably quite a few tickets given out on that day.
Ooh.
Yeah, other than that, uh, hope everybody has a safe holiday.
Okay. Um, and I guess I, I would like to say, safe travels if you're traveling and happy Thanksgiving and I just wanted to ask a couple of things. Like on the, um, what we went through tonight with the tax exempt, uh, status, do we want to ever talk about that as a board to give any direction to staff? Or do we want to just look at, you know, like as each thing comes up? Or do you want to talk about, um, looking at like, hey, we'd like to have a building on there before you come and ask? Is there any kind, do we want to give direction on that at this time or do you want to just sort of think about it?
Yeah, I think it definitely needs to be added.
I think add it to a future agenda.
Is it our, is it our, our ordinance for the three years or is it a higher one? Like state?
Marty's expert.
That's why I'm looking at him.
Yeah, um, it's, well, the, the ordinance that, that we have is three years with the renewal application.
We change that or is that set by code, three years?
I'd have to look, just, just to, uh, off the top of the head, I'm not sure. I, I think it's something that we put in there and, and it's, it's more of a protective thing, I think. But there's also language in the ordinance where if they change the use, you can al- also take away the exemption. So if it's, let's say you're giving it to one group who's doing a certain activity and then they sell the property to someone else, you can, you can take away the exemption.
I think we're looking at like maybe a one-year temporary for people that buy land that are preparing it for, so never mind, I'll shut up. Given my signal from across the way.
I agree, I agree with Vice Chair Fidzikowski, um, that I think a good process in the future would be, would be when the building exists and then, um, th- then it, I don't even think would need to come in front of us because it would be a federal level exemption. Um, but if, what? The way that I interpreted this whole experience with this particular exemption is, um, they were ready, they were ready. I understand, nobody could have predicted the pandemic, um, but that was in 2020. And so that's kind of how I interpret the whole experience is we gave a tax exemption expecting a building and we still don't have a building. So I, I'm, I agree with Supervisor, or Vice Chair Fidzikowski. Uh, and, and kind of, I, I think we should have some teeth that say, "Real estate needs to exist".
So that would be something we would have to vote on to change because that's an ordinance that we have? It, it's actually a policy, yeah. And so we, we would add, we could add some language and bring the policy back for the board. Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. All right, good.
And have some narrative or something to help people understand.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's really important. Is there consensus?
Flexibility because we want to make sure if there is another pandemic or whatever, right? That, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the pandemic happened in 2020, but really we felt it deeply for a good year or two, you know? So, anyway.
Okay, looks like there's consensus to do that. The other thing I wanted to ask you all about, um, you probably saw that Casey Jenkins is leaving, um, as the director of the Montgomery County Museum and, um, it's our loss, but he's moving up. Do you, is there consensus to do a resolution for him? Does he really move the museum forward? Consensus to do that, okay. And then the only other thing, I will tell you that when I did go down to Salem on Saturday to represent us at Senator Warner's Roundtable on food insecurities, uh, one of the things that came up, it was a very diverse group of 20-some people plus, uh, people that were involved in feeding Southwest Virginia, but one of the things that seems to be a concern is the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program called SNAP and, um, the, the folks there are very worried that if that funding gets cut at the federal level, it's going to really impact what they're able to do too. So I just wanted to pass that on to you and I think I sent you all, all the wonderful information that Jennifer Harris put together